I would make a motion that the agenda be approved with the exception that out of nineteen eleven.
About six.
And six.
One second, Ed.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just the minutes we have are for the October thirteenth work session, October thirteenth executive session, October fourteenth regular meeting, October fourteenth public comment meeting, October fourteenth executive session, October twenty-sixth special call meeting, and October twenty-sixth executive session. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to the? Make a motion if it is approved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Anybody want to give us their financial statement?
I'm not used to giving a statement. Okay, each department, this is the report for October thirty-first. Each department should be at eighty-three percent of their expenditure that they've used. Departments over budget as of October thirty-first, Mark Clark and Superior Court at ninety-one percent, Sheriff's Office at eighty-nine percent, Detention Center at eighty-five percent, Superior Court at eighty-five percent, EMA at ninety-four percent, and the airport is at one hundred and three percent. Overall, we are at ninety-one percent of the total revenue budget received and seventy-nine percent of the total expenditures that it used. Total revenue received to date, twenty-four thousand, or twenty-four million nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Total expenditures to date, twenty-one million six hundred and eighty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars.
On the airport, aren't we taking some budget action today?
Well, I had sent you all information on that, and we can do it now or we can wait and do them just sometime before the end of the year because there's probably going to be some others to do as well.
They ought to be addressed.
Right.
The other thing.
Any other questions on the financial statement?
Well, I had sent you all information on that, and we can do it now or we can wait and do them just sometime before the end of the year because there's probably going to be some others to do as well.
They ought to be addressed.
Right.
The other thing.
Any other questions on the financial statement? We have Georgia Power requesting approval for some additional easements for the project affairs that they're currently working with. Does anybody have any problems with those easements? You know, we made a motion that the easements requested by Georgia Power be approved. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have one recently, William Hendricks from residential, our one residential agency, the Edmond Agricultural, and this is to split the acreage and combine it with two attorney parcels. Personally, I'm good with that.
I agree as well.
And I would make a motion either be approved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to note that I remember citizens wishing. Anybody that would like to speak on any topic?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yeah, about that subdivision going on down there off of, off of Gunstock Creek Road, Tales Creek Church Road, and it used to be Ridgewell, I don't know what it is now, Dodge or whatever. Happened, always, whatever. But about that subdivision, I, you know, I've been involved in this stuff after that crap was through. And I'm here to tell you, they took the road right down to the edge of the river and excavated, and that is not right. There were endangered plants, there were endangered species, and there still are, and I am totally against what is going on down there. And we need to stop this crap.
Karen, I think that's already been addressed. Do you want to speak to it?
I know that Art has been down there and then he pictures that he is, to the best of my knowledge, he's in contact with the, with the grading and the.
And very likely that we find some ghosts.
How can, how can, you know, this environment is all about environmental crap. How can they do this?
Obviously, they shouldn't have, and that's why they're likely going to be fined. They're facing some pretty stiff fines for that.
Fined? They ought to be hung.
They won't let us do that again.
Well, you know, they should, because really, there's no way to fix what they broke.
Right.
There's no way. It's done.
Yeah.
It's finished. And I'm here to tell you too that there's too much static tanks over there, okay? They got city water fine. They don't have sewage. All that stuff is going, leaching into the river, and there goes cars late. That's the worst supply for chance work.
Now, we don't have any control over the static tanks. That's the help department.
You what now?
The help department?
Yes, sir.
They're the ones that decide how many and where and so forth with the static tanks. We don't have any, anything to do with those at all.
I guess it's all so-called water under the bridge now, but man, that thing is.
Well, that's one of the things that has prompted us to take a closer look at the subdivisions that we've been doing lately. So, yeah, it's water under the bridge, but it was also a wake-up call.
Yeah, but the damage is done.
That damage is done, but the objective now is to.
Once you go down there, the bulldozer right up against the grid, and clear that out. All those plants are gone. I watched the same thing happen. I wish I was more involved in the stuff in the old days, building the subdivision. Right next to my property on Lake Land Drive was a hundred and fifty acres. It was an old home place down there, it was born to the Creek Indians, way before they ran out of this country. And there was an old road that cut down a few years. You could see the stone walls that the, that the old Indians had along the creek where they grew their vegetables and stuff. They only grew what they needed. They weren't making money. They just wanted to survive. But down on that old road bed, it was a small one, one side of the fork, they cut that road in there, new road, and they put it in there. And they had the wherkeys, lady slippers, but we see the purple ones, not a lot, but sometimes you see the purple ones. They had white ones there, too. And they would take up bulldozers over there. They're gone. They've never come back. They're extinct. All kind of messy plants, and they're gone. I just want to say, you know, you gotta, you gotta have a little bit of compassion for who was here. You know, like the critters that lived there, too. I mean, where did they go?
I agree.
That's all I want to say. I just, it just, that'd be wrong.
I got one thing to say. I am sick of the hecking back. I get, I'm just venting, okay? But I am sick of the hecking back of people telling me they were here first, okay? My people were here seventeen thousand years ago, okay? Seventeen thousand years ago, my people were here. I don't want to hear it anymore from anyone. I was here first, because they took it from my people. Just letting you know, I gotta vent.
Just when they say. Anybody else? Final adoption to the speed detection device ordinance. I'm going to make a motion that this be adopted based on the assurances that it would only be operational for the morning and afternoon drop-offs and not be regular, you know, full-time.
Did we have something with this stuff? Didn't have anything officially written out.
That's it, Paul. I mean, what references the state statute?
Oh, okay. So you're adding?
Rather than trying to, because it'll change, because it was just recently enacted, probably two years ago. If they'll find something that they want to make a change on, it'll change. Rather than us chasing those changes, we're just going to point to that state statute.
Okay. And then what Charlie's adding will be in addition to?
That's an operational issue.
Oh, yeah.
That'll be in the standing. The board and the sheriff's office.
And it's an operational issue that I'm happy to enforce as long as it's approved by everybody here to do it.
One second.
On favor?
Aye.
Discussion on possible actions to support down at one thirty-six at the same time. This is something that we were requesting from some neighboring counties. We don't really have a, an obvious rights association. I'm okay with it. It doesn't commit us to spending any money.
I don't think it just connects us to a clue.
I think it would be beneficial for us. So, I'm sure.
Are there certain areas that you want to approve? Because I know a media person has asked me if there's going to be certain areas or?
I don't recall only request for us to, to do this that they, that they mentioned specific areas.
And the resolution that's attached to it.
That wasn't the same.
Oh, it wasn't.
From another county.
But that's one that's on the way through.
But is that an example of this particular, okay, then I would say in line with that. What we want to do is just.
Marry what they're.
Marry what they're doing. We're not trying to lay any new territory here. So, I don't remember, but I'm making that form of motion.
I'll sort it.
On favor?
Aye.
Wanting to remember to the chief member of the beautiful committee, I believe, Dr. Katie Coopley has indicated she would be willing to accept that, and I will make a motion if she be appointed to that committee.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Resolution on bids for asphalt, concrete, propulsion, propane. Was that C W M D? Just kind of go through these and maybe we can prove them again once. Okay, propane, amplification of propane. Concrete would be risk block. Some is vulcan materials. And motion with diesel materials. Does anybody have any problems with any of those logos? Or recommendations for anybody else?
I recommend that this be accepted.
I'll stick with that. On favor?
Aye.
Resolution on bids for a lift station. So, I, I, we just need to approve to put out the bids. So, we, do we have everything we need to put out the bids? No, we already got, I'm sorry, I'm thinking something else. We want to accept the, what, one billion, what's the low bid on that? And unless somebody has another preference or a reason we shouldn't, then I would say yes, we can accept that low bid. And that was by U W S.
I thought it was T-Stanco.
Hang on. That was by T-Stanco, T-Stanco and Company, I'll adjust.
And we're going to work up the funding.
Yeah.
And we really need to consider that sort of line.
We do, but do we?
To be separate from that, I just.
Right, yeah.
Almost forget.
We need that sort of line, but I just didn't want to mix it into this.
I think Kurt was wanting to mention that, but so that it would be in our minds.
Another thing, too, that we need to mention on that is, we've had, Stephen Weaver, who's the current project manager, has had discussions with Kurt according about the existing lift station. He is very concerned because there's indications that it's dropping. It's right on the very edge of that precipice there. And he feels very strongly that there needs to be some stabilization done on that before we start messing with it. That's not included in the project. It will be separate. It will be initial estimate, eight to ten thousand dollars to, either with cables or there's three or four apparently different engineering methods that you can use to stable that such that if that ground gave way, that this thing would not fall off into a trout string. Seems to me like that would be a prudent thing to require. The folks that, with the engineering folks did, did not disagree that it would be something that really should happen. They just didn't want to add it to the current project because it would entail some initial paperwork and so forth. But we need to decide on that, if we want to go in separately authorized.
They didn't say, the engineer didn't say it needed to be done, just?
He agreed that it was a risk. He just didn't want it added into the existing project. He felt it would be something we need to do outside the scope of that. And he offered some alternate methods other than the cables that Stephen had mentioned. So, what it amounts to is, it's a risk. It's not, it's one of these things, it's like most risk, it's probably not going to happen that there'd be a problem. And so.
We didn't spend all this money and then.
Well, in a situation like that, what you have to do, I think, is assess how serious would the damage be for that? And in this case, it would fall into a trout string.
Well, eight to ten thousand dollars is not an issue. But that's separate from?
That would be separate from this, yes. We would need to allocate that amount separately.
Didn't know we had a project manager.
Oh, I'm sorry. We've only had, we've only had two days.
And what's the name?
Stephen Weaver. He is, he is starting on the pool now, so.
So we're not the pool by?
We're going to have a pool by May thirty-first.
Because we need to approve this the entire one year. Move, we accept the bid. One B, one hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and seven dollars six cents.
I'm sorry, I think I missed one.
I recommend, I make a motion that we accept the bid, T-Stanco, in amount one B, one hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and seven dollars six cents.
I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
And we'll, we'll talk about the stabilization when we get to the budget.
Yeah, that's mine, yeah.
All right. Resolution on bids for solid waste, actually, I think this one that was probably pulled out. We'll be negotiating on that the rest of this week.
In return, I thought, B, it was a request for proposals of new.
That's right. I failed to change that on my grant here.
What timeframe after we finalize? Who's the final?
I think Charlie, you and Brian are going to begin the negotiations midweek next week as the latest.
Do we have dates yet? I know we. I needed to catch up with you on that, what are the dates here available? I can make room. Let's just say, early as possible. I wouldn't want it to go any past midweek because we're in a real time country.
Yes, I would suggest a special call probably the week of the twenty-ninth. I don't know if the thirtieth will be, it may be just a slightly bit too soon for everything to have concluded with those negotiations. So it may actually be at the end of that week. You may be meeting twice, but that is a critical function of the county.
Exactly.
So it may be awarded at some point, because if it's not awarded to the same contractor or if this currently exists, there's going to be an interchange of equipment.
Yeah, send me rather than whatever. Discussion on possible actions, capital improvements plan for German County Airport. That's something that we have got to get turned in very quickly. Hopefully, all the questions were answered, and if y'all have more, I'm going to make a motion that it be approved.
Sure.
On favor?
Aye.
Discussion on possible action of budgeting. Thank you. I feel it's craning up here. Okay, well, there's a couple of things. The first one, moving the building. It turns out that we have some money left in that line item, let's see. Fifty thousand dollars, I guess, can be allocated from the seventy that we originally budgeted for the building that we won't be utilizing. The remaining seventy-five thousand dollars can come from the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that was allocated for capital improvements to the courthouse and facilities. I think only fourteen thousand, that's being used. So, we can, we can allocate that money from those two line items. And we will still have money left in the, what was the hundred and seventy-five thousand capital budget? Twenty-two, we're revitalizing the refunding cap. Any comments or questions on that part? The twenty-three thousand for computer upgrades, twenty-three thousand is a guess at this point, but it turns out that we've got sixty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars that we can allocate to PCs. The problem is, and it's very similar to what happened with the road departments' capital equipment list earlier, this money is allocated out to different apartments in different amounts, not necessarily where the computers need to go. So, what I would ask is that we do the same thing with these, now, moving forward, that we talked about with the capital road level. We just say we have a pot of sixty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars we can be using for IT.
I'm fine with everything except the last part. Me, road department, one, one unit. And with the computers, you've got major, years and dollars.
Right.
I'd like to, kind of like the who's requesting what, and I think we lose it if we put a lot of it together.
Okay. The only problem I have, it's not a matter of who's requesting what, it's we're kind of surveying and finding where these computers are that need to be replaced. We obviously have money to do it, and I don't have any problem at all with, with keeping it by a department. Except that we're going, what's going to happen is we're going to end up with some departments over, some departments under, because the ones who have the money out there aren't necessarily the ones who need the computers.
Let me come in a different way.
Okay.
At some point, it would be good to know what certain units are spending on computer equipment.
What if we do this? What if we say that we'll look at this for right now, as kind of a pot of money, and as computers are purchased, we will record the, the department that it's purchased for, and at the end of the year, we'll allocate that money out to the other line items, and it'll be just as if we had budgeted that amount for it.
Well, I'm not too concerned about the budget here, is knowing who, who's getting the equipment.
We'll absolutely be.
And we can easily do that with our financial software, too. We can put descriptions in there as to how many computers and, you know, what department and all of that.
We'll definitely do that. And then I'll, I'll throw in, since we don't have a firm for you, ten thousand dollars to stabilize the, the lift station. One of the works being done.
Of course, the social funds.
Trying to remember what we had budgeted for solid waste on capital.
I think we can just take it out of what was already budgeted for solid waste for capital, because I think there was an additional item budgeted for solid waste other than the lift station upgrades.
Was that the?
It seemed like it was that two thousand dollars.
No, we've already done that.
It will be capital funds. Can I let you know where it's going to be? Because I don't like throwing out numbers, Hubert.
I understand. On the other hand, I'd like to know, here it is, here's what we're going to use it.
I agree.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I didn't realize, I didn't realize this was, you know, a niche.
That understanding to the future. I would agree to add the ten thousand.
And I'll let you know where it's going to be. That work?
I'll second your motion. No, thank you.
If I didn't, I might get a motion.
And I'll say.
All right. On favor?
Is it a job we have to talk about the airport?
Is the job worth to talk about the airport? I mean, we, it can be, as long as it's done sometime, putting it on the end of the year, it'll be fine. We don't have to do that right now.
Well, we do.
Do we have other stuff coming up that we want to reconsider?
A few, I think we'll have a few that I would like to put before y'all for consideration before the end of the year. And most of it is personnel-related, you know, personnel changes, insurance costs, those kind of things is the biggest part of it.
Do you share with me, okay?
Okay, fine. If that's fine with y'all.
Do we decide that establishing the school board as a subgrain recipient for the county was a good thing?
Well, we really don't know, we don't have any information, and I've got to give that information from Beth Brown.
Why don't we table that, and if there's an urgency to it, we can do it, we can add it to it, you know, in the space of time. Does anybody need any second session? All eyes are on you.
Having a great meeting, I'll move you to your room.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'd like to know.
You don't hold it.
No, I can handle that.
We have to...
Whatever it is, I can do it.
Oh, no, you do. It's not that, I'm just wanting to inform you. It's just informational...
Yeah, no worries.
Right.
And he's the... Do you remember it's...
I remember that.
...by law, it was turned into a substation.
Stan Clu, it's T-A-N-C-L.
The one where a bridge is...
There are the gashpers.
Right. To make sure Ed...
Sweet, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.